Ready to go?
Okay, thank you. I'm calling the meeting to order. Please rise and join me with the for the or with the for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, into your public, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you for coming to the public hearing of this next year's school budget. And I'm going to turn this over now to Mr. Bowles and Mr. Keegan. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome. One of the things that we're going to do is we are going to present the budget for the upcoming school year. And I will start off, and my name is Dan Bowles. I'm the superintendent of schools and we have Mr. Keegan. He is my assistant superintendent for business. One of the things that we want to make sure that the public was aware of is our areas of focus. Number one area of focus is ELA and literacy. We want to make sure that all students are able to read on grade level. And making sure that we're checking in with those people that are having difficulty. Other areas of focus are what we call SEL or social emotional learning, given all the things that have happened with COVID, people with anxiety. A lot of the depression and things that have happened, social emotional learning has also been a focus of the district. Health and safety. You'll see within our slides that we've put a considerable amount of resources into health and safety along with the LA mathematics is also an emphasis. Diversity, equity, inclusion. It's titled DEI. That is something that the governor, not sorry, the commissioner has tasked all superintendents that we need to focus on over the next few years and develop policies and procedures. English as a new language. You may not be familiar with that, but we have many students that are from different countries and speak different languages. And you'll see a slide on that as we move forward. Other focuses instructional and operational leadership, energy performance and the savings from that. And capital projects to replace certain things as far as the junior high chillers. Now, a lot of the budget proposals that we have are really stretching our resources. And we're using some of our fund balance to support some of these initiatives. As you can see, the second bullet, the final tax cap calculation allows for an increase in the tax levy of 3.37. But we are still staying within the tax cap. Inflation has been a major issue and concern. It is much higher than anyone even anticipated it would be. And we are also supplementing some of the general fund with grants. One is titled coronavirus response and relief. You may hear us refer to that as CURSA or American Rescue Plan referred to as ARP. When I mentioned ELA and literacy, we did the pilot for new ELA program. We're adopting it currently. And there's going to be training of all of our K four staff. And one of the things that we're putting into all the schools, things called instructional coaches. There are people that are there to support all the teachers for the ELA program. Go to the next. This is just a picture here. One of our retired staff members has a van and she has a book van go. And she goes around to all the schools and students can select reading materials and we'd like to see happy faces reading, reading books. So I mentioned one of the emphasis was social emotional learning. And the last four years, the district has hired 16.5 professionals in regard to school counselors, psychologists, social workers, either family engagement specialists, restorative practice specialists. And the reason for that is prior to several years ago, we've been at a deficit. We are the largest school district in Anadaga County. And I've, I've talked to different groups and up until, I think it was probably 2014, 15. For a high school that had almost 2,200 students, we were still operating with less than a full-time social worker at the high school. That person was split between CNS and Gillette Road, point six at the high school, point four. So there was a need for some of the support services within our district. We've been up, we were operating at a deficit or lower than we should have over that time period. So one of the things that we're proposing for next school year, a social worker at Allen Road. Allen Road has a program called our 811 program, and that's a special needs program. And with all the needs that for students and families that have been happening since coronavirus. We've realized that one social worker wasn't enough. The, the special needs program really needs its own dedicated social worker. And so by adding one at Allen Road, one social worker can work with the building and then another social worker can work with that specific program. Junior high, difficult age at the junior high for years has only been one social worker. There's still one there. We are adding a social worker at our junior, a second social worker at our junior high school. So we're looking at two additional supports for next school year's budget. And there's a little star there says it doesn't include several programs. One program is called Liberty Resources. We have partnered with the county on mental health services. We have Liberty Resources personnel in five of our buildings. Another resource also that partnering with the county is a promise zone specialist. And then another called access and they are tiered. There's a tier one, tier two and tier three as far as their, their level of I'll say, I don't want to say effectiveness, but tier, tier three is one of the areas that we are looking to make sure we're shoring up because it's a high need. What are the next? So right here, chalk the walk. We have been doing things as far as suicide prevention. And this was just an opportunity for students to write messages to students in the school on the sidewalk as students are entering in the building as part of a suicide prevention week. Health and safety. So our nursing staff during this crisis really needed some support. We've added five nurses in the district as well as a nursing supervisor based upon the need with coronavirus. At the junior high this year, using some of the funds, we added an additional school resource officer. The junior high, the age level is 13, 14, 15, high need. We currently have two resource officers at the high school. We had one at the junior high. We, we added a second one this year. There were some upgrades, air filters, increasing fresh air exchanges per hour focused on disinfection. And then also for next school year, we are looking at an additional security guard also at the junior high school, which is a high need grade level. Mathematics, we've not had a director of math for a few years. And so that position was being split between a director of ELA and math. District, again, the largest district in the county. That was too big a chore and we were looking at our math scores and want to do something to improve our math. So we've looked at new curriculum, hired a director. We have a person that's a dedicated math coach and what that person does is that person goes from building to building to support teachers to help improve instruction in math across the district. AIS, it's one of those acronym, academic intervention services. And so we're looking to make sure that where there are deficits that students have, we are adding staff to support those students. And we're also looking at trying to focus on the professional development. We've realized that especially our secondary level. There hasn't been as much professional development for those secondary teachers that are teaching some of the advanced courses. And we want to make sure that our students have what they need as they move on through high school and move on to college. I mentioned DEI diversity, equity, inclusion. And one of the things that we've done is we've, we're working with BOSIS with a COSER. BOSIS has hired a DEI coordinator. And they go from district to district and they work on developing programs around diversity, equity, inclusion based on the district's needs. So what they'll do is our district may be different than what Liverpool needs than maybe different than what Beville needs or West Jenny. So they'll kind of do an audit and do a survey and get a sense, where do we need to start at the district that they're helping out? So we're doing a needs assessment. They are working, starting off with leadership because they want to make sure administration has a good sense of that direction. And then we're looking at conferences and then customizing the support around diversity, equity, inclusion based on information from a need survey that they're going to be doing. I mentioned E N L. If English has a new language. Back in 2007, there were only 28 students in our district that spoke different languages. Right now there are 272. So there's been a significant increase over the years as far as students that do not, that English is not their native language. If you look at this slide, it says there's about at least 20 different languages that are spoken by students or families in our district. So because of that, we currently have at our elementary schools, a focus at Cicero L and Smith Road for the programs to support those students. Because of the growth, we're going to need to expand to a third elementary school and that will be at Roxboro Road Elementary School in Mattie Dale. So as, as the, if you're looking at the overall need, there was a need to increase our staffing by point five at CNS and point five at Gillette to make sure we're servicing all the students. Mr. Keegan. And again, nice pictures. So this slide here, administrative support at the middle school level. So one of the things that has happened, we're seeing an increase in student behaviors across our district and other districts that have come as a consequence of a lot of the things going on today. And what we did, we looked at the ratios and Gillette Road Middle School has about a little more than a thousand students, about 1,036. But as far as the student to administrative ratio, they were dead last in Anadaga County. So out of 34 middle schools in the county, the student to administrative ratio was last and Rock's middle was 30th. So at one time, Mr. Crabtree, it might've been what 10 years ago? There were three administrators, two assistants and one principal. And given the, the issues, behaviors and supports, we're looking to put back that position at the middle school level where there's an additional assistant principal at Gillette Road as well as Roxboro Road Elementary School. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Keegan.
Thank you. Yes. Good evening. So our budget is 188.4 million dollars of revenue. And I want to point out the blue and the green sections of the slide to just show how dependent we are on our state aid and our local tax levy. We kind of live and die by those. On the next slide, you'll see a comparison. The, the column on the left under 2122 shows you the current year's budget. And the next column is the budget for next year. And so we were really fortunate to get a significant increase in state aid for the 22, 23 school year. The reason we got that was that the governor and the legislature have committed to fully fund foundation aid over the next three years. So they gave us a pretty good increase this year, a good increase next year. And we'll get a hopefully a good increase for the 23, 24 year as well. And just to, if you're not familiar with foundation aid, it's the largest component of our school aid. And it's been inequitably distributed for the last 15 years. And North Syracuse unfortunately has not gotten its fair share of, of state aid. And so they're trying to correct that problem. And we're optimistic that then this year and next year will be good, good years for us in terms of state aid. You can see the increase of 5.52%. The other item on this slide that I'd point out is our building aid. Our building is going up 13%. And that's because our Bear Road Elementary School, the one we just finished renovating is coming online. And we're going to get the state aid associated with that project. And then finally, on this slide, I'd want to point out our tax levy is 3.37% as Superintendent Bowles indicated. And overall, the budget's going up $8.1 million or four and a half percent. On the next slide, this is our tax cap calculation. I, I don't know how many of you are familiar with this, but we can only increase the tax levy by a certain amount in accordance with this formula. And so the primary component of the formula is inflation. So we can increase the tax levy 2% or inflation, whichever is less. So the primary driver this year is inflation. Then you might say, well, wait a minute, you said 2%. How did we get to 3.37? Well, the, a big part of that difference is the Bear Road Capital Project. Remember the voters voted to construct or reconstruct Bear Road and we've done that. And therefore we have some additional tax levy associated with that. Dan, if you go to the next slide, you'll see that regardless of whether someone lives in Cicero, Clay or Salina, if they live in a hundred thousand dollar house, they'll pay the same amount in school taxes. And this tax levy increase will increase taxes by about $80 a year before STAR. And that's important because STAR has a big impact on, on our tax levy. And many of our citizens will see a lower increase than we've quoted here. Good news is our expenditures equal our revenues at 188.4 million dollars. Again, the green and the blue pieces of the pie are important to point out. We're a people-based business. The most important thing we do is put adults in front of children. So the lion's share of our budget should be people. And that's the case here. If we go to the next slide, you can see the comparison year to year. Now, there's a couple of oddities that I feel obligated to point out here. If you look at our salary line item, it's only going up 1.19%. And that's because we're using, that's lower than we've agreed to in our union contracts. But that's because we're using some of our ARP and CURSA money to bring in additional resources to support the social emotional needs, closing some of those academic gaps. For example, we're going to be running again this summer, elementary summer school for kids. We hadn't done that historically, but there were some deficits that need to be closed and, and the costs of that are in there. You'll notice our debt service goes up quite a bit. Well, our debt service is our mortgage payment. And so our Bear Road School is coming online and we're going to use that state aid that we got, that increase in state aid to pay for additional debt service. And then you can notice there's a number of double-digit increases. If you look at those percentages. And if we go to the next slide, Dan, we'll, we'll talk a little bit about inflation. And I have to tell you, inflation for the 12-month period ended March of 22 is up eight and a half percent. Energy costs are up 32%. You know, indicate how old I am. The last time this was like this, we had hyperinflation like this was when I was a senior in high school, freshman in college. So it's been 40 years since we've seen anything like this. And it's kind of scary when you have to live under a 2% tax gap to, to have inflation like this. So we're, we're really hopeful. We remain optimistic that our government will figure out how to tamp down the inflation so that we'll be in better shape next year when we do our budget. I'm not going to take you through all of the, all the particulars. We have a lot of assumptions underlying our budget, but there's a couple I want to point out. The first one is our retirement cost. We're very lucky here in New York State that we have the, the teacher's retirement system and the employer retirement system in that they're both very well-managed funds. And so what that means is that they're fully funded. So that if you went to, I'll just use an example, if you were in Illinois, for example, their pension fund is funded less than 50%. So that means that the burden for people who are retired is still being paid for by active school districts. Here, our, our people's retirement is fully funded. So when they retire, they're collecting out of the pension fund. And we're, we're providing funds to the fund based on our employment. And, and they do an amazing job managing it. So there's a predictable percentage of funding and that's, that's an important item to mention. Fuel costs. I just tell you that we're a little stressed out about this, probably like most of you that have, are gassing up your cars. We've seen significant increases in fuel costs and, and we've attempted to contemplate some of that in the budget, therefore some of those increases you saw. Energy costs, we entered into a three-year supply agreement before things went crazy for our electric and gas. And that really is, we're very fortunate to be in that situation. We're, we're part of a group called NISMIC. And that we can, we can click the slide there, Dan. And the other one is just, I want to just point out medical benefits. We have a health oversight committee here. And we have done an amazing job managing the, the medical costs for our employees are fully self-insured. And we've actually beat the market consistently. We're a large group. And we've, we've seen increases in our medical benefits that have been lower than the market. Even though we're, we're looking at a projected increase that's reasonably high, if you notice in the budget, it's 2.3% that our benefits costs are going up next year, which is pretty impressive. As Superintendent Bowles mentioned, we're relying on federal stimulus funds. And so this warrants a little bit of explanation. We receive about $7.8 million from CURSA and about $11.5 million from ARP. And those funds are received over a three-year period. They have to be spent by September of 2024. And so you can see up there, we've indicated where we're going to spend the money. And, and most importantly, the reality of it is we have academic deficits, academic gaps that we need to close. So we're doing everything we can to make sure that we're putting the resources in place to help our kids get as close to grade level as possible. On the, on the social emotional side, we're trying to make sure we have those supports in place for kids. And we're also spending money on additional health measures, PPE and things like that with the, some of this money. And then one of them up there that warrants a little bit of explanation is furniture and equipment. So I don't know if any of you have been up to our high school or junior high recently where you might've noticed we have what's called a sidearm desk. Well, in 1979, when I graduated from high school, I sat at one of those sidearm desks. So we haven't invested in furniture and it really was problematic, a challenge for us during COVID, dealing with some of the furniture we have. And so we need to do some furniture replacements. And so we put a little bit of money into that. And we think that's going to be important going forward for our district. And that's, that's the federal stimulus money. The last thing I'll say on that is we're constantly monitoring how we're doing with that money and how, whether we're meeting kids' needs. And we're very open to support, I'm sorry, for, for feedback from the community and our staff members on how we're doing and whether we should redirect any of those funds to, to be more effective. So this, this is another area that's different. We've not done this in a while. So on the referendum this year, you're going to get to vote for the budget. You're going to, as usual, and we'll talk about buses in a minute, but there's going to be two other propositions. One of them is for an energy performance contract. And I wish I could tell you that we were so wise that we anticipated this energy crisis and, and we're being very proactive. But the reality of it was we got a grant from NICERTA to evaluate all of our buildings and their energy performance. And just fortuitously, it, we did the grant, we hired an engineer that evaluated all of our buildings. And we determined that there's about $7.5 million worth of work we can do in our buildings that will dramatically reduce energy costs. Things like lighting, our heating systems, just creating efficiencies. And the, and the good news about this is we can get this funded 85.3% with state aid, not the local tax levy. And we have money in our fund balance to cover the difference. And so we can make these improvements in our buildings and probably save hundreds of thousands of dollars a year after this project. And what we'll use that money for is sustaining the staff that we need to continue to meet the needs of our kids. So we're really excited about that. The most important thing to take away from this is it'll save us cost, energy costs, and there's no impact on the local taxpayer. The next, the next slide is a thing that Dan mentioned about the chillers of the junior high. Now, this one's not such a great story. We, we have an old air conditioning system at the junior high, that junior high is an older building. And we do a thing called the building condition survey where we go through all of our buildings every five years and we, we evaluate them, formally evaluate them. And we actually have to report all this information to the New York State Education Department. Well, we knew the air conditioning system of the junior high was old. And we thought that would make it for another five years till our next capital project. Well, as soon as we, the ink was dry on our plan and we had done our referendum, we started having major problems with the air conditioning system at the junior high. The major component of that system, the chillers failed on us. So we still have air conditioning there now, but it's like limping along. We're holding it together with duct tape and chewing gum, honestly. It's, but it's working. So what we want to do is we want to do a $1.4 million project to replace those chillers. Again, 85.3% of that project's going to be covered with state aid and the balance will be paid for out of our fund balance. So there's no local tax impact. And the good news is we'll have a more comfortable building and we'll have more energy efficiency at that building as a result of the modern chillers. And it's important to note, the building was constructed with air conditioning in mind. So it's not, it's not really designed to operate without air conditioning. We run our special ed summer school there and we have a lot of medically fragile kids in the building. So it just, it's really not an option to have, have to do. And again, we're excited that we can do it without a tax impact. This chart is simply our fund balance to show you that we have enough money in our savings account to cover the cost of those two projects. And Dan, you can flip through the next two. So buses, Dan and I get the question regularly, hey, you know, your enrollment's declining. Why do you have to keep buying buses? And it's, it's a really good question. So the, the first thing I want to tell you is that when we buy buses, we're replacing buses that are 10 years old or older. So these are pretty old vehicles. So we're getting, we're getting a lot of miles on them. The other thing is that you might notice in our community, there's a lot of construction going on, new developments and, and whatnot. And so it's, it's, we look at bus capacity, those buses can hold 65 passengers. But I, I'll be honest with you, when you go up to our schools, it's rare to see a bus with 65 kids on it. But it's about transit time for us because remember, we, we do one of the things that's unique here in central New York, we triple trip our kids. So we take our whole fleet and we send them out in the morning, first thing, and they pick up all the high school kids and junior high kids. Then when they're done with those runs, those same buses and drivers go get them to middle schools, Gillette Road and Roxboro Road Middle School. And then when they're done with those, those buses go get the six elementary schools. So we're utilizing the fleet really well, but we can't afford to take too much time on the route to pick up all the kids. And that's why even with declining enrollment, so if 10 years ago you came and you looked at one of our buses, it might've had 65 kids on it. It might only have 50 kids on it right now, or, or in some cases less. But we, we can't afford to have less buses in our fleet and make those transit times and be able to triple trip. To give an example, if we had to do what other districts do and go to double tripping, we would need to increase our fleet by more than 30%. So that would really be expensive. So this is the most efficient way to run the fleet. And you've got a couple of pictures here of kids, you know, happy kids. And I'm just so proud of our drivers and, and attendance during the pandemic. They did an amazing job with the kids. And that little picture on the left, you've all heard about how tight the labor market is. Well, our transportation department has done an amazing job attracting really good drivers and attendance. We've been running job fairs and, and reaching out to the community and we've, we've got a really good crew. And I'm just super proud of transportation. I'll, I'll just share one other statistic with you. Department of Transportation, we have to have our bus inspected. You know how your car inspected every year? We have to have it every six months and that, those buses get turned over to DOT and they do a thorough inspection. We, our pass rate on our buses is over 98%. We have, you know, just incredible high, high pass rate, super safe fleet. And we're very lucky in that regard. So we have Janine here from the Salina Library and we are really lucky. This is a gem in our community for any of you that live in, in, in the Salina area, right on our Roxboro campus. We have a wonderful library. As you can see, they're proposing their budget with an incredibly modest increase. And, and so if you're a voter in Salina, you'll see that on your ballot to vote for the Salina Library. So the, the vote is two weeks from today, from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM at the district office here. If you live south of 41 and if you live north of 41, the vote is at our Cicero Elementary School. The couple of things, there's not a lot of people here tonight, but if you talk to friends and neighbors and people want to register, they're not even sure if they're registered. They can call the district's office here and they can get registered up to May 12th. So we really, we can't tell people how to vote, but we would love the community to come out and vote. So please encourage people to, to vote and also to get registered if they're not voted, vote if they're not registered. And, and the last thing I wanted just to say before, if I, so I don't forget. And, and the last thing I wanted just to say before, if I, so I don't forget this. If you know people that have concerns about the budget, have them call Dan or my, my office, and we'll get right on the phone with them and explain things to them. I think if we share information, I think people will appreciate, you know, the, the quality of this budget. You can go right to the last slide, Dan, and we'll just maybe ask, ask, answer any questions folks have. Do you guys have questions for us? Yes.
Well, you mentioned the English language cards, you're trying to reinforce, you're trying to reinforce that better so that more people are grade level?
Yes.
Okay. When do you start that? What grade?
Or ELA, it starts at kindergarten.
So it goes all the way through to twelfth grade?
Well, the new program that we're initiating is a K-four new ELA program. And so we're trying to make sure that just early literacy skills are reinforced. And then we're also looking at piloting some newer materials, five through eight as well. But we're just at the starting phase of that. But what we were doing with K-four, looking to make sure we are providing literacy coaches for buildings to support the teachers to reinforce reading at the early, early elementary levels.
So there's no help for ninth graders at?
Well, we do provide what they call, it was like AIS support, and it stands for Academic Intervention Services. So there are reading specialists that do work with the older levels as well. Yes, ma'am. So.
For social workers, there's been all this talk about training teachers to do what?
So when we're talking about the SEL with the social workers, one, we're having social workers go in the classrooms and work with students that we identify. I know Mrs. Goldberg is not here right now, and she's our director. But for instance, we are doing something called the BYMAS. And we are surveying our students, trying to get a sense of where they are struggling. And then once we look at the data and we get feedback, our social workers are running groups, they're going in the classrooms, they're doing individual counseling, they're working with families, all to try to make sure they're meeting the needs, or whether it be anxiety, depression, all these things that are emerging due to some of the things that are happening with coronavirus. Now, you were talking about teachers as far as training, some professional development for teachers. Now, teachers won't be doing like individual counseling, but we want teachers to be able to recognize when students are struggling. So that's some of the PD that we're looking at. Because we don't expect the classroom teachers to be experts in everything, but we do want them to be able to identify if, if I may have an issue or I may be struggling. The term that we usually try to convey is that teacher to be able to give a warm handoff to a psychologist or a social worker or family, family specialist that can help either the student or the family with the issue that they have.
You mentioned a couple of times enrollment dropping. Is there anywhere in the budget that shows historical figures, how much is dropping each year?
I don't think we have that in the.
I don't, yeah, I think, I think the school report card's in there, and that tells us our enrollment. But what does that the school report card's in there, and it does show the current enrollment, it doesn't show you the trend. So if, yeah, so we're down to. Right. Yeah, it, it, so the, the trend here is that we have had declining enrollment and like everybody else, actually probably less than most. And the reason ours is less is because of all the construction that's gone on. So we've got it, we've got a number of different factors affecting our enrollment. We're down to about seventy-six hundred kids K-12. We have another couple hundred kids in our pre-K program at Main Street, and then we service another three hundred kids through our UPK program. So, you know, our enrollment is down. I keep telling Dan it's going to level off, and it's not quite, it hasn't quite leveled off. But, but we are, we are down. And if you compared that to, I guess, in the nineties, Dan, we had ten thousand kids or?
Even just before two thousand and ten, we were at least a little above ten thousand. But Liverpool used to be larger than us, and now Liverpool is, sorry.
Liverpool, our neighbor, used to be larger than us, and now they've lost students and they are even smaller than we are. So that's why we are now the largest suburb district in Anadag County. Well, it's not so much people are pulling, one, well, Mr. Mr. Keegan, we do Forecast Five and, and things. So there's, there's a little bit of that, but in central New York as a whole.
Yeah. So on that note, like I said, are the trends we're seeing, actually, North Syracuse is probably losing less students than other districts. But the, the big thing, so Dan mentioned Forecast Five, one of the things we look at is a thing called Live Birth Data. And it's kind of cool that the Bureau of Labor Statistics, I'm sorry, the Census Bureau, provides us with literally birth by school district. So we can look at how many babies were born in our district, and then we, we look at that data and we project like what's the kindergarten class going to be. And we look at that data over the time, over time. So we can determine a, a trend in how many babies born are actually attending. And our numbers are pretty high. But I think, I think we're dealing with this, a lot of the trends that we've experienced in central New York. People are moving to places that have maybe a little more robust economic environment, better jobs, people are moving for the weather. There's a lot of reasons people are moving. We also have an aging population here, and people are having fewer kids. So some of those big trends are, are affecting us. But hey, don't get me wrong, we're, we, we anguish over this, and we want to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the families that live here and that we're attracting families from central New York. And we've done a lot to improve our programs and differentiate ourselves here in central New York and hope, hope that families will move to the North Syracuse School District.
We, we haven't done that, but what we can do, we can look to do that as we're moving into the summer and the fall. I'm sorry, just going to go over here first. Sure. So that's one of the things that we're studying right now, because we're looking at the timeline when the grants run out. And we want to take a look at the most effective things that we've added. Because if there are things such as, I'll just see the summer school program for elementary. If that is something that we're seeing a really good progress in, it's meeting the needs of students, that's something that we're going to want to sustain. And so we're going to be evaluating all of those things. What are the high need areas? And what are, what are we getting that I'd say the most bang for our buck? And those are things that we'll want to continue to keep.
The other thing, you, you heard me talk about Foundation Aid. So our Foundation Aid is going up about the same pace as our ARP is going down. So there's a little bit of relief there. The other thing that we're hearing out of Albany is that this is a statewide problem. This SEL thing is not going away. This isn't like, hey, let's do something for a year or two and it's going to work. So we're hearing from Albany that they are going to continue to fund programs like this. And we're working with our legislators, legislators and communicating with them. And, and, and they're going to do everything they can to create some sustainable funding for the, for the, the various services. The, the final thing I'd mentioned, Dan mentioned the partnership we have in Anadag County. We have been so blessed to have those resources, and we're hoping that those can continue as well. So we don't have all the answers, but we got a lot of irons in the fire and hope that we can, that we can sustain the important supports for social emotional learning.
We're going to do it with students, faculty, and the community. We want to make sure we have input from as many people as we can to help us with the initiatives that we're looking to supply for BOSIs with that, that data. At our board meeting, we had some student presentations, and we want to have student voice so that we know what they're hearing and what they're seeing in the school environments that they're in, and that will be very valuable information. We have to report whatever is reported as a DASA violation or a DASA event. So we don't pick and choose and select. Yes. We, we, we have to legally.
Well, actually, it's funny you say that. So we haven't finished our planning yet for summer school, but we're using two different sites this year. So the younger kids are going to one site, and then the next breakpoint is going to a second site. So that by nature will require some separation of the buses. So we are, I, I, we haven't worked all the details out yet, but I know that Dr. Leahy has laid at least that out, that we're going to segregate the kids into two different sites. We're going to do it at Smith Road Elementary and at Roxboro Road Elementary.
One more. National level, this is presidential now. They made it on a national level CRT. They showed school boards going crazy in the south about it, or all over the place. And I don't hear it mentioned here, I don't even know what it is, but does that mean anything to the administration? If apparently men said, I don't want CRT, what, you know what I'm saying?
So what you're referencing is critical race theory, that you're seeing a lot of the things that were happening down south. One of the things that we're doing is, based on our Commissioner of Education, we're looking at our diversity, equity, inclusion, but that, it, it's not quite the same. And I think people want to confuse both. We're looking at what we currently do, and our Commissioner of Education has asked us to create a policy on those things. So with a survey, getting feedback from students, parents, and that nature, and we're using BOSIs to do that. So if what you were seeing before talks about, are we making these sweeping curriculum changes and those type of things? What we're doing is we're following what the Commissioner is asking. And right now, those curriculum changes, I think what teachers are looking to do is inform themselves and will provide them with professional development so that they can, if I'm an English teacher, use their current knowledge to inform students. But we are not taking CRT and making these massive curriculum changes. If that's what you're asking.
I'm just trying to get a definition. Maybe it shouldn't be, you know.
Yes. Well, one of the things that's happening is the, the behaviors increased in, it is a struggle for the current administration to address several of the needs that are happening in the schools. And we're, we're either having, sometimes I've talked to parents because something has occurred, and they said they haven't heard back from someone. We've had teachers say that there's been a referral that's been made and trying to get an administrator to get to that, that day because of the volume of things that have been occurring. So there used to be three administrators at these middle schools, and we have the largest middle schools in the county. And yet they haven't been able to address many of the, the needs of the building, the students and the staff, and getting back to parents in a timely fashion.
The, the, the buildings really did need three administrators. And about ten years ago, we had to cut two of the positions. We knew it was a bad decision. We knew it was the wrong one. But remember, when the economy crashed, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, it rippled through state aids, and we had a financial crisis. Our number one target was to cut away from kids.
So we went and we said, all right, where are the positions we can remove from the system that are not going to be in direct contact with kids? And that's when we got rid of our Director of Technology, our Director of Security, our Director of Food Service, our two principals at the middle schools. And so we, I, you know, honestly, I'll stand by those decisions. They were the right decisions for kids and families. But I'll tell you, those administrators in those middle schools have really been overloaded. And the data, we did the, we've done the analysis every year, and the data shows that our Gillette Road Middle School, the ratio of students, as Superintendent Bowles mentioned, is the bottom of the, the county. I mean, it's just, it's crazy how many kids per administrator. And that directly impacts our ability to support teachers, support families. And so we're really hopeful that it'll make a difference in these buildings to have that third administrator.
Are there any other follow-up questions? I want to thank you for coming out at this time. I don't know Mr. Falfalia.
Yeah, before we adjourn, what, what we do is we introduce any candidates who are running for the Board of Education who are here tonight. I'm going to read out the names in alphabetical order, because typically we have pulled the ballot order already. And that was delayed due to a candidate pulling out and changing the timelines by regulation. So if you're here, stand up, Robert Crabtree. Matt Herman, who I know is not here, Nicole Planty. And Amanda Segrew, who is not here. So those are our candidates who will be on the ballot or on a ballot along with the budget vote, which is two weeks from tonight. Okay, and thank you very much. And with that, we are adjourned.